I'd like to call the Monday, May 6, 2024 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under government, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
And may I have a report on the minutes of our April 1st regular session, work session, and executive session, our April 9th works session and executive session, and April 22th executive session. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, yes, Your Honor, and I won't repeat all those dates, but I have reviewed all the minutes, and I've found them to be complete and correct, and I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Under status reports, we have a lot of really cool status reports, and we're going to start with a special recognition of Kip Bahachi. Welcome. He is the epitome of a volunteer public servant. Kip recently ended 22 years of service on our Board of Zoning Appeals and served 16 years as the board chair. He also, he has served and continues to serve on the Property Maintenance Board since 1992, 32 years and counting, and he has served for many years as the board chair of that organization as well. He served on our Public Facilities Task Force from 2001 to 2014. He served on our 2004 Comprehensive Planning Committee, and he served on the 2010 Athletic and Recreation Facility Planning Committee. All of the above service he did as a volunteer to our great city of Oakwood. In 2010, Kip received the Oakwood Rotary Club Civic Leadership Award. I'd like to congratulate Kip for your service to our fine community. And I know he'll probably decline this offer, but if you would like to make some comments to the citizens here and watching at home, we'd appreciate it very much.
Thank you all very much. As you can tell, my hearing's not great. That's why I retired. But I grew up in this community. I've lived here all but about five years of my life. My children grew up here. My grandchildren are growing up here part-time, and we all know what a great, unique community this is. And I want to thank council members, past and present, the city staff especially, Norb, Rob, everybody that's worked so hard to create a good town here. We're all engaged. The citizens are engaged. We're engaged in the schools. We're engaged in the government. It's been an honor to do all this, all these years. I wish I could do it again. So, thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as Older Americans Month. I don't know why City Council requires me to read this, but I'm pleased to do it. Whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Oakwood's older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. Whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas the city of Oakwood should endorse programs to ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectiveness. Now therefore, under the power vested in me, I, William D. Duncan, Mayor of the City of Oakwood, hereby proclaim May 2024 as Older Americans Month in Oakwood. And next, we have one vacancy on our Budget Review Committee, and we have contacted Donetta Johnson, and she has agreed to serve. Donetta is a program manager, I think, out at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, and this is in Precinct E, I believe it is. And so I would make a motion for council that we appoint Donetta Johnson to our Budget Review Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This is a timely appointment because our first meeting of the Budget Review Committee
is tomorrow. So, all right. And now, we have a couple special guests here tonight. Actually, we must have a whole bunch of special guests because this place is packed. But we have, what do they do with it? Here we go. We have retired Colonel Andrew Lloyd and Carol Lloyd. I'm sorry, Cheryl Lloyd. He was a colonel in the British, Her Majesty's Air Force in the UK. Are you here? I saw you standing. Could you stand up? There he is. Is David Tillison here? Okay, all right. He had planned on coming. He is also the manager of the Wright-Patterson Museum out at the base. And so, and that's him who just walked in the door. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Tillison. Okay. That is good timing. Okay. All right. So, I have a proclamation recognizing... Wait a minute, we have one other special person here. Debbie Dash Anderson, are you here? That's you. Could you stand so people could see you at home? This is the daughter of Joseph Dash. Correct. Welcome. Okay. So, I'm recognizing May as Codebreaker Month and the remarkable achievements of Joseph Dash. Whereas Joseph Dash, a pioneering and world-leading American engineer and inventor, was awarded the Presidential Medal for Merit in 1947 for his invaluable contributions to the field of cryptology, significantly hastening the Allied victory in World War II. Whereas Mr. Dash, born on May 23, 1907 in Dayton, Ohio, and having demonstrated exceptional aptitude in mathematics and engineering, graduated from the University of Dayton and resided in Oakwood for 17 years. Whereas tasked by the National Cash Register Company President Edward A. Deeds to form the Electrical Research Lab, he innovated the use of triathlon tubes and circuitry to develop high-speed electronic counting and mathematical computing machines and created the first electronic calculator. Whereas in 1941, following the United States entering World War II, wherein the Axis Powers submarines were devastating Allied shipping, the US Navy sought to rapidly develop a high-speed resolution to counter enemy Enigma machine encryption efforts. Whereas appointed as Research Director of the United States Naval Computing Machine Laboratory in NCR's Building 26, Joseph Dash was tasked with the top-secret project to create a machine to rapidly decipher the four-wheel Enigma machine code. Whereas having assembled and led a team of dedicated engineers and mathematicians and supported by the Women Accepted for Volunteer Emergency Services, the Waves, Mr. Dash cooperated directly with UK's key codebreaker, Alan Turing of Bletchley Park. And whereas despite working under a compressed schedule, extreme pressure, and tremendous challenges, Joseph Dash's perseverance, ingenuity, technical genius, and leadership resulted in him successfully designing and constructing an electromechanical and electronic computing device which became known as the American Cryptoanalytic Bomb Machine. Whereas capable of breaking the most complex Enigma encrypted messages in near real time and now considered the cornerstone of modern automated cryptology, Dash's machines proved crucial intelligence and played a major role in winning the Battle of the Atlantic, thereby maintaining a lifeline to the Allied forces in Europe and successful Normandy landing, which significantly contributed to the Allied victory, shortening the duration of the war and saving countless military and civilian lives. Whereas Dash's groundbreaking work on the American bomb is considered a cornerstone for modern automated cryptology, he went on to co-patent an electric calculator with his help in creating the first completely solid-state computer, is attributed to being a milestone in electrical engineering and computing. Now therefore, under the power vested in me, I, William D. Duncan, Mayor of the City of Oakwood, hereby proclaim May as Codebreaker Month and offer our deepest gratitude and admiration for the remarkable achievements of Joseph Dash. We commend his unwavering dedication to serving the United States of America, his extraordinary contributions to the fields of cryptology, computing, and innovation, and acknowledge his instrumental role in shaping the outcome of World War II and in saving countless human lives. May his legacy continue to inspire and guide us in our endeavors to advance science, technology, and global cooperation for the greater good of humanity. It's appropriate, I think, that we issue this proclamation on Holocaust Remembrance Day, and we appreciate very much his role, and I read your article about him that came in my packet last Friday, and it was extremely interesting, and the number of special people that slept on the floor of the two-bedroom house in the 400 block of Greenmont. So, it's good reading, and I encourage all of you listening at home to read it as well. I think we have some people that would like to speak to council about this. I didn't know if Colonel Lloyd wishes to say a few comments. Need to come up to the speaker, to the microphone so that the people at home can hear what you have to say.
Well, I'm going to be very brief because it's really a real honor to the people to my right here, but I do want to say thank you. We've taken some advice and guidance from many of you at this bench. I will particularly single out Norb, who's been an absolute star to work with on this as well, and just thank you very much. Really, honor goes this way.
Okay. And Ms. Tillison, do you wish to say anything to City Council? No? Okay. And do you wish to... You're... Okay.
If it pleases the council, I too will be brief. I'm Joshua Anderson. I'm the grandson of Joseph Dash, and on behalf of the family of Joseph and Dorothy Dash, my mother Debbie Dash Anderson, and the extended Dash family, who we've been reunited here tonight in council chambers, we're very honored to be here to receive the Declaration of Council or the proclamation on behalf of Joe Dash and his team of engineers and mathematicians and other specialists at NCR. So many friends of Oakwood have come forward to escort this recognition into reality. I can't name them all, but I would like to acknowledge a few of them. We're quite grateful and would like to thank, of course, the mayor and the council of the great city of Oakwood for recognizing, creating, and presenting this honor. To Oakwood unsung heroes, Andy and Cheryl and their organization for providing the leadership on taking this initiative and bringing the wartime achievements of so many from Oakwood into the public eye, and the Oakwood Historical Society for contextualizing this, the wartime work within the overall history of Oakwood in the last century, and for also their promotions of Codebreaking Month, and everyone else from the city who helped contribute and make this possible. During the period when my grandfather and his wife Dorothy resided at 413 Greenmount, my grandfather stayed out of the public eye necessarily. Today, some 80 years later, I am quite certain he would be fascinated by the attention and notice that the city has bestowed upon the work his team performed. I feel certain that he considered the efforts that he and the others undertook to be a simple duty of citizenship and an obligation to this community, one that any one of us would not hesitate to undertake in his place. My grandfather could also be direct and straightforward, so with that in mind, and on his behalf, let me again say thank you for this great honor.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to come down and present you with our proclamation, and your family and extended family are welcome to get up here next to you, because I think we have our own personal photographer out here, y'all can put this in the Oakwood Register on Wednesday. We also have a visitor section that we normally have for all of our council meetings, and if anybody wishes to address council at this point in time, you can come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. I see someone coming?
Oh, this is very, very quick. I just wanted everyone to know...
Name and address for our record, please.
Carol Holm, from the Historical Society. I just wanted everyone to know that there is an exhibit at the Oakwood Library and the South Reading Room that we put together on this exact thing. So, please go visit it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I encourage all our citizens to come to the Oakwood Library to see this. And we have another visitor?
Counsel, my name is George LeBeuf, and I'm here only to welcome anyone that wants to have a cocktail, wine, beer upstairs to celebrate this proclamation for Joe Dash, and please, all are welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeuf. I gave him some recommendations, but they were above his budget, so we have a third person. Could you state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Jill Brooks.
Welcome.
I'm here on behalf of also the Oakwood Historical Society, and I just wanted to say that the Oakwood Historical Society proudly stands behind recognizing the remarkable people who have shaped our town's history. As we plan for the future, we're excited to announce our plan for rotating exhibits at our House Museum. These exhibits will spotlight the stories and contributions of notable figures and moments from Oakwood's past. Stay tuned for our announcements and join us in celebrating our rich heritage and honoring those who have made Oakwood what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Wow. I'll bring that back up. That is awesome. I am... Congratulations. That is amazing. This is incredible to stand before you guys. Thank you very much, City Council, for having me. My name is Holly Noel Pullman, and for the past three years, I have been a proud citizen here of Oakwood. After marrying into the wonderful Pullman and Quinn family last year, I can officially say that I am sticking around. I am here today in front of you to announce that I have started a small business called Bloom Tender. My company specializes in growing microgreens, herbs, plants, and other fresh harvest products, all of which will be available at the Oakwood Farmers Market this year. I'm really excited for the upcoming season, and I look forward to meeting my fellow plant enthusiasts. Currently, my farm is in the process of obtaining my organic certification, which reflects my commitment to providing the people here in the community with healthy, safe, and high-quality foods. The values of Bloom Tender align closely with Oakwood's dedication to sustainability, and I am grateful that this city is the launchpad for my young business. My goal is to continue expanding Bloom Tender and strengthening my connection with the city by learning more about Oakwood's sustainable programs and operations. I am eager to collaborate with the city to contribute to our shared growth and prosperity. If you wish, please visit my website at thebloomtender.com or find me on social media. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself, and I look forward to getting together soon.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Oakwood. I believe the farmers market's going to open up...
June 1st.
June 1st. Yes, okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council at this time? Here comes someone. Welcome. Oh, nope. Anyone else wish to address council? All right. Well, then, we will close the visitor portion of our meeting, and we will go straight to legislation, and I believe Mr. Stevens, Councilmember Stevens, has a couple ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. An ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio by lighting the same with electricity. This is the third and final step of our 2025 street lighting program. It allows for the costs of street lighting to be certified to the Montgomery County Auditor for Assessment. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move the council adopt it this evening.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
I believe you still have the floor.
An ordinance to levy special assessments for the construction or reconstruction of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto in the city of Oakwood, Ohio. This ordinance is the third piece of legislation for last year's sidewalk repair project authorizing the assessment of the sidewalk repair costs that have not been paid directly by the affected homeowners. There are 26 unpaid invoices totaling $20,715.13. This is also a second reading of this ordinance, and I move the council adopt it tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
One more.
Yes, I do. An ordinance to levy special assessments for the construction or reconstruction of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto in the city of Oakwood, Ohio. This ordinance is the final piece of legislation for the 2022 Sidewalk Repair Project. It authorizes the assessment of sidewalk repair costs that were not paid directly by the affected homeowners. There are also 26 unpaid invoices totaling $29,530.27. These costs were not assessed last year due to timing and staff issues, but by adopting it tonight, we can include these 2022 costs with the assessment for the 2023 project. This is the first reading of this ordinance. However, I move the council waive the second reading and adopt it this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
And I believe Vice Mayor Byington has some ordinances as well.
I do. Your Honor, this first is an ordinance adopting the 2025 tax budget for the city of Oakwood for fiscal year beginning January 2025. This complies with Section 6.01 of the city charter, and this is our annual housekeeping ordinance to estimate the city's revenues and expenses for the calendar year of 2025. This is our second reading of this ordinance, and I move the council adopt it this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor, this is an ordinance amending provisions of Chapter 12, the signs of the Oakwood zoning ordinance, so as to clarify the regulatory exemptions for certain flags and to specify a method for calculating the sign face area of temporary signs installed as lawn signs. This is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning code. It was introduced with a first reading at our April meeting. These proposed changes were reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public hearing on March 6. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval by council. Council will now conduct a public hearing of its own this evening and then proceed to vote. So, at this time, I would ask the mayor to open and conduct a public hearing.
Thank you. As our process in having a public hearing, we... The procedure we normally do is we'll have a city staff report summarizing the application in tonight's hearing, and since these are code updates, the staff report will be presented by our law director, Rob Jacks. After that, the staff, I will... We will open up the public hearing to take public testimony. We'll start with anyone who wishes to speak in support of the text amendments, and then we will hear from anyone who wishes to speak against them. When the public testimony is concluded, we'll close our public hearings and begin council deliberations. Following our deliberations, we will vote on the legislation to adopt or not adopt our decision. Before we begin, if anyone wishes to testify for this public hearing, because it is a public hearing, and we wish that they would swear in those that wish to testify, and our law director will swear you in en masse, so you could just stand and raise your right hand. With that, Rob, do we have anyone, or I guess I should say, do we have anyone who wishes to testify either for or against these amendments to our zoning code? We do have one.
All right. Then, sir, if you'll just raise your right hand and repeat after me, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before council this evening. All right, thank you.
Okay. Are you in support of these text amendments, or are you opposed? Okay. Well, if you would like to come forward to... Oh, I'm sorry, sir. He wants to do a presentation first, and then we'll have you speak. Okay. I apologize.
I don't even have a PowerPoint. I'm just going to sort of talk. These are a couple of, we believe, fairly minor adjustments to the sign provisions of the zoning code. We're bringing two at once, but because they're both from the sign code, they can be done together. One is a change to one of the exemptions that we have in the sign code. We have a section of signs that are listed as exempt signs, meaning that they are exempt from regulation by the city. And one of the things on that list are governmental flags. That's how it reads in the code, governmental flags. You've heard me talk to you before about how, particularly with First Amendment concerns, freedom of expression, we try to stick with content-neutral regulations for sign rules. In other words, this is a saying I like to say, if you have to read the sign to know how it's regulated, there's a good chance that the regulation is unconstitutional. And the concern is that you have to read a flag to know if it's a governmental flag or some other kind of flag. And so by exempting one type of flag but not exempting others from regulation, there's a preference being shown for certain kinds of speech. So, what we've proposed is to replace that with a regulation that doesn't classify them as governmental flags but is what lawyers like to call a time, place, and manner-type regulation. It's based on the characteristics of the sign. And specifically, we've tied this also to the requirements that are already spelled out in another part of the zoning code, the 900s, the design and performance standards for flag poles. So, this is language that's already echoed there, but we would say that you can have... That flags are unregulated, up to a total of 60 square feet in aggregate surface. this is language that's already echoed there. But we would, we would say that you can have, that flags are unregulated, up to a total of 60 square feet in aggregate surface area, which sounds like a lot. But that, we've also said that it would be, that no one flag could be more than 30 square feet. So if you're, if you're hitting that max of 60, you could have two flags. Two flags that are each 30 square feet. And the flags can be no greater than six feet on their long dimension, which means a typical four-by-six-foot flag would be okay under this regulation. When you get to a larger flag, like a five-by-seven or bigger than that, it becomes too large to be exempt from regulation. This is just to qualify for the exemption. So we were saying you can have up to two four-by-six flags that would fit within the definition. Anything big, and we're not going to be concerned about what the content is. It can be, you know, for a national flag, a state flag, an Ohio state flag, a Trump flag, a Biden flag, a what-have-you flag. The city would not regulate the content of that flag whatsoever. You could have up to two four-by-six flags that would be exempt from regulation. That's change number one. Change number two has to do with the temporary yard signs that you see people put in their yard and how we calculate sign face area on those. Because those have turned out to be kind of problematic in how we enforce the code. Most of these temporary yard signs tend to be printed on both sides. That's just how they're made. And our code says that when you have a multi-faced sign, we count all faces for purposes of calculating the sign face area. As a practical matter, these signs get displayed differently than permanently mounted signs. If you have a permanently mounted sign on a corner, they're usually oriented so that both sides are visible, and you want to count both of those. But some people will put their political signs perpendicular to the street, where you can read it coming one way, you can read it coming the other. Some people orient it parallel to the street, where you can only read one face. And there've been some questions raised as to what's fair, how many do you count? As sort of a practical consideration, our zoning department has taken to counting those faces that are visible from the public right-of-way. But technically, that's not how the code is worded. So what we're proposing to just sort of standardize this and make it, make it uniform for everyone is that when you have temporary yard signs, even whether they're printed on one side, both sides, whether you, however you orient them in your yard, we're just going to count one sign face for purposes of calculating your total area. That errors on the side of allowing people to express more viewpoints rather than fewer. And we think that that's a, that's a neutral and streamlined way to approach this, so that everybody's treated the same and fairly. Those are the two changes. One, to change the exemption for governmental flags to an exemption for flags of a certain size. And the other is to treat temporary yard signs as being single-sided for purposes of calculating sign face area. You have any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one. Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay. The typical American flag that people will hang from their house is, what's the dimensions of that? Does this fit into that?
Most of those are three-by-five. Occasionally, you get a little larger one that's four-by-six.
All right.
I've not, just driving around the community, I've not noted anybody who's flying the bigger five-by-sevens or six-by-nines.
Okay. And the bed sheets on Irving, on the Dayton side, from the fraternities that have all sorts of writings on those, those would be too large under our... I don't see bed sheets hanging from people's homes in Oakwood. I do see them in the Dayton side.
I suppose if they used maybe bed sheets for a, you know, a toddler crib or something like that, that might fly. But, but most of your, your bed sheets are going to be too large.
A queen-size bed sheet hanging from the wall says, "Come to our sorority party. You can't do that in Oakwood."
They would still be regulated. They would still be prohibited.
Okay.
Yes. Because they're, they're longer than six feet on any one dimension, and they're also probably greater than 30 square feet. I don't know the exact size.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
And we don't have a timeframe on how long certain yard signs can be up?
We do not. There's a reason for that. There have actually been court decisions on that. It used to be very common for communities to have these laws that said, okay, you know, if there's an election in November, you can put your sign up for 30 days beforehand, and it's got to be down three days afterwards. What the courts have said is when you have a law like that, what you're essentially telling people is, your political speech is prohibited 11 months out of the year. You can only do it one month out of the year. And we're not allowed to prohibit political speech. So we have to allow them year-round. We do, we can say that if you have a temporary sign, if it's falling apart, if it's tattered, if it's blowing around the neighborhood or causing problems, we can address that. We can make you replace it with a new sign, things like that. But we can't tell you you have to take it down.
Well, I can't propose a clutter law to our yard that has too many signs year-round and doesn't look good, right?
In general, clutter would probably be addressed under the Property Maintenance Code, but we would want to stay away from anything that looks like we're trying to regulate speech.
And then is there, I don't, I don't recall, is there a sign size on the temporary yard sign? What's the number that we have?
The code says you can...
We're calculating.
The code says you can have a total of 12 square feet of temporary signage in your yard.
Yeah.
Again, if you're counting both sides of that, that starts to shrink the number of viewpoints that a person can express. But if you only count one side, I think you could probably have
Four.
Four, maybe five typical political signs, depending on the dimensions.
A traditional election yard sign is, would be, there'd be four of those, and a yard is probably around
Typically, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
If you, if you made them smaller, you could certainly display more.
Okay. Thank you.
And we cannot put political yard signs in the right-of-way?
You cannot put them in the right-of-way. That's correct.
Or a boulevard.
A lot of people will, will try to stick them out in the tree lawn, because I think a lot of people think of that as their property. That is public right-of-way. That's prohibited. Boulevards are prohibited, and anything like that.
But your, your yard is your yard, and that's fine.
Your yard is your yard.
Okay. Any other questions for our law director? That was a very concise and accurate report. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And now, I guess, sir, have you come up if you wish to speak? Again, if you need to state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is David Suits, and I live at 291...
I know you.
I know you, sir. He always feigns like he doesn't know me. I fake him out. I've got lots of disguises. I live at 291 West Thruston Boulevard. It's right across from the Dayton Country Club. So what Mr. Jack was very kind in doing here is outlining the freedom of speech aspect of this. And I would say that my yard is a case exhibit for Oakwood, because a couple of years ago, I had a lot of political signs in my yard, the kind that were facing on the coming-and-going way, not, you know, out to the sidewalk, right? And this is bad, but I wasn't aware of the ordinance limits, so I got a kind reminder as to what those were. So I've got some great neighbors, and they were happy to oblige and take some of my signs and put them in their yard to remedy the situation, okay? Which was good. The thing that I noted, driving around Oakwood, is that it seemed like there was some selective enforcement going on as to what we were doing in our yard relative to what some of the other people did. Now, I'm not in a habit of pointing out these examples. That is something that I'd rather the city did. But I did notice that mine was, because it was so visible, was an obvious choice to poke at, and it's fair. But I'd like to see that, you know, kind of spread around the city there, if we're going to put these kinds of enforcements in there. Because it's just an observation. Might not be true, but for what it's worth. So I plan on putting, you know, signs in my yard. I certainly would not put them out for an entire year, and I equally get annoyed when those signs are out for an extended period of time, not only before but after the fact. It's like, you know, hey, you know, take care of it, you know, take some responsibility, okay? So I had signs out of my yard a couple of years ago, as I said, and whether this is correlation or causation, I'm not really sure. But I've got a rather prominent flagpole in my front yard, and it has a oversized American flag on it, usually. Right now, it was a little tattered, so we took the one that was up there down for the moment. But we'll be putting up one larger perhaps than what you're currently considering. So what's going to be the regulation on that? Is that going to be content-based for larger flags in that instance, or are those even going to be allowed?
Yes, please.
Yes, so like five-by-seven or something larger? Because that's about what I've got.
I believe right now that the current regulation already limits it to the dimensions that I was talking about.
Okay.
That's under the, what they call the Design and Performance Standards for Flagpoles.
Okay.
It may be that if you're flying one larger than that, that you're outside those code limitations. But it would also depend on when you started doing that and when that law was adopted. I'd have to look into this.
And that's fine. This flagpole's been out there far before I took residence at my home, which was in 2009, so.
It's possible that you're, that you're grandfathered in there.
And, and that could be. And I don't want to, you know, overly bring this to this council's attention, but I've, I've had a flag up there prominently, and then I haven't flown it, but the predecessor owner had the Ohio Pinnacle flag there down below as the second flag. So that's, that's been a tradition at my house. So that's one of the reasons I bring that up. But interestingly, my flagpole line was cut the day after the election. And so the flag fell down, and the storm was blown around. It was cut. It wasn't torn down by the storm. There was a clear cut line, okay? Yep. Clear cut line there, okay? So don't know if it was vandalism. Don't know if it was people that didn't like my, my speech, okay? But my wife and I were quite offended, and it cost us a couple hundred bucks to repair that line. It's not something we're going to turn into the insurance. It's not something that the police are going to necessarily be able to inspect. The law enforcement officials have got better things to do. So we replaced it on our own volition. But quite honestly, I was offended for expressing my own, you know, freedom of speech there in that instance, and feeling like there was some kind of retaliation going on, okay? Didn't really appreciate it. Can't prove it. Don't want to get paranoid about it. But I bring it to this council's attention that, you know, that's the times that we live in, is that people are going to, going to get that way, you know? Again, so I appreciate some consideration going into the balance of the, you know, free speech with trying to protect, you know, the property appearance and rights and stuff like that. There definitely needs to be a balance. Rest assured, I'm going to be paying attention to that. But I just wanted to let you know that I've already had some fun with compliance unintentionally, okay? And I'm mindful of everything that's being presented here. So I hope that goes into your consideration here on how the, not, how it only gets enacted, but also gets enforced after the fact, okay? So I appreciate the council's attention on this. That's really all I had to say, okay?
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Carol Holm. Why does government flags?
Before you, Tess, I don't think you were sworn in at the beginning. Could I, could I go ahead and administer an oath before you?
Yeah, Carol Holm.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before this council?
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay. So why is government flags eliminated? Does flags mean that we can put up for sale signs that are, you know, huge and so on on property? Or, or what's this supposed to mean, where it's now flags?
We would not regulate flags per se at all if they fall within the specified dimensions.
So they could be buy here now?
We, we do have some provisions that apply to banners, which are, which are defined a little bit differently as a type. I can't quote that type to you off the top of my head sitting here, but, but there are separate regulations for banner-type signage.
Okay. But we are eliminating the word government?
Yes. Only in the category of exempt flags. We would say that it's not government flags only that are exempt. It's any flag that falls within these, these size and dimensional characteristics.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to opine on this public hearing? Yes.
I have another question. Rob, so under the exempt flags, is the limitation the four-by-six that you mentioned?
The, the way it reads is that you can have up, up to 60 square feet total.
Yeah.
Counting one side. It's up to 60 square feet total. No one sign can be greater than 30 square feet, and the long dimension of that flag can be no greater than six feet. I guess six by five would be the maximum dimension.
All right. So the six-foot that you talked about is the longest?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So in my, in my example, the flag that I have hanging from my front door is not taller than me, and I'm not six feet, so I'm probably okay.
Probably.
Okay. But the flag that will hang at the Holiday at Home Parade, it's streepin' far hills from a crane.
Significantly larger.
Is ginormous.
Yes.
Yeah. And there's one on 75 at one of the, I think it's that same company.
The Crane Rental Company.
Those would be too large to be displayed.
Fixed to a residence.
Fixed to a residence, yeah.
Again, we, we didn't pull these dimensions just out of thin air. These, these are dimensions that are already used in another part of the zoning code in talking about the Design and Performance Standards for Flagpoles. So we're just, we're just echoing those same dimensions in the exemption.
Well, then I'll take that next step. And that's where I'm going with this, is the, are these, and I don't know what a four-by, I mean, I can visualize a four-by-six, but not when it's up in the air on a larger flagpole. And obviously, some flagpoles are different. So two questions. You know, our gentleman who spoke a minute ago, you know, I don't know how big his flagpole is, but is the, is a four-by-six flag, you know, going to look ridiculous on his flagpole? And then I'll segue into the next question is, what about down at, or at the high school or at Lane Stadium? Those are larger flagpoles. And I may, I may be wrong. They may be four-by-six now. I don't know. But if they're not, if they're bigger, is that, are we grandfathering those in? What are we doing on these public poles? You cannot fly a small flag at a Lane Stadium, for example, especially when it's across the way from where everybody is.
What... I think those are, those are valid questions. I, my, my sense is that those, most of those places you're talking about are probably also grandfathered, because those were uses that were established before we had the regulation that you're talking about, or the, the dimensions that we're talking about. What we could do if, if, and maybe this would be a good relief valve to build in, it would certainly speak to Mr. Suits's concern as well, is we could, we could use the regulation that we're talking about here, but build in a process for special use permitting for larger flags. If the planning commission is...
Based on the flagpole.
Yeah. If the planning commission is able to be satisfied that it meets the various special use standards in terms of neighborhood compatibility and all that sort of thing, not detracting from surrounding property values, et cetera, then, then someone who wants to have a larger one and has a property that could support that would be able to do that.
Right.
That's, that's something that could be, that could be edited into the ordinance and brought back to you.
Yeah. Because now I think about the one in MacHumm Stadium, that flagpole's gigantic, and that flag is huge. So I don't know how it reads into that. I mean, as far as you keep mentioning grandfathering, and I'm fine if it's grandfathered, but...
Yeah, that's right. If we're talking about Lane Stadium, we're out of the city limits of Oakwood.
Ah, love the asterisks. All right. That's true. All right.
MacHumm would be certainly within.
That's different, though. Okay. Yeah, that's fair. That's fair. Same with the flagpole at Lang School, I'm assuming as well, since it's in the city of Kettering. Okay. Okay.
But if a, if a special use process is something that council's interested in, I could, I could build that into a draft of the ordinance and bring it back to you.
So are you, are you, well, first thing, before I go there, does anyone else wish to address us regarding this public hearing? And you need to be sworn in also.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before this council?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. What about, like, temporary yard signs as far as, like, wildlife certification signs? I have one myself, because I have a wildlife habitat, and I know that that's been talked in the biodiversity club. So what do those stand as far as this goes?
All temporary signage in your yard is treated the same, whether it's a political sign, a local fish fry sign, a native wildlife habitat-type sign.
So those cannot stay more than...
They're not time-limited. They just, you have to keep it in good repair. If it starts falling apart and blowing around the neighborhood, we would tell you to put a new one up because it's unsightly and causing...
Okay.
Oh, yeah. We, now, advertisements are, are treated differently. That's one that we get that question from time to time, when, you know, somebody has their roof done, and then, you know, there's the ACME roofing sign that gets stuck out there in the yard. This job proudly done. But we do prohibit advertising signs.
Right.
And commercial speech is a little... We are able to regulate that a little more freely than, than, say, political speech, religious speech, what the Supreme Court would call core expression. So we do have some regulations prohibiting advertising signs. But all the other things that we're talking about, the native wildlife habitat, all that sort of thing, that would be, they would all be treated the same.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
If she had a sign that says, "Come by my fresh greens," that might be prohibited? Because is she really selling her product?
Well, then we would get into a whole different section of the zoning code that talks about home occupations and all the regulations that apply to having home occupations. That's a different, a different issue. We can talk about that if you like.
But a sign that says, "Come to the farmer's market and buy my greens," probably okay. Okay. All right. Yeah. So would you like to address council? Please do, and we'll need to swear you in as well. This has turned into an interesting topic.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before council tonight?
I do. So a question about flags. Is it limited to flagpoles? Flags on flagpoles? So they could be displayed horizontally?
Yes.
Okay. How about naming a donor or an advertisement on a flag? How about naming a donor or a advertisement on a flag that hangs up temporarily? That's the lawn.
We already prohibit advertising signs, so if it's an advertisement, I think we would, commercial advertisement of some sort, we would treat that differently.
Okay. And then the lawn signs? I forgot my question. Oh, lawn signs. So, lawn, I'm assuming, means residential zoning versus non-residential?
I believe so, yes. I'd have to double-check the regulations as to what kinds of temporary signage are allowed in the business district. I'm focused primarily on residential.
Residential?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Did you state your name and address for the record?
Jenny Altenberg.
Jenny Altenberg? Okay. Okay. I only see two, three other people that haven't spoken. Okay. No, I've got one no. Y'all are good? Okay. So, we will close the public hearing, and then we will go into our deliberations. But before we do that, Vice Mayor Byington, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the city law director review the possibility of adding exemptions to this particular ordinance and that it be brought back to us at a later date.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
To clarify, when you say exemptions, you're talking about like a special use process?
Special use for flag poles.
Based on...
Larger flags.
Flag pole size, yeah.
If we do that, does that mean we need to come back and do a first reading and a second reading with a public hearing again?
We would do a, we would do a, the readings would apply unless you waived a second reading. I don't know that we need to do another public hearing. We've elicited public comment on this already. Everyone's had an opportunity to weigh in on it. Would you like to have the public? I'm going to backtrack that. Let's have the, let's have the public review the new text.
This one's been fun. We'll get some people to show up to counsel meetings. Okay.
I think we should.
And we'll properly notice that in our, the way we notice things. Okay?
I've made the motion.
So, it's been moved and seconded that essentially we've tabled this, and you're going to come back.
Yes.
Everybody got it?
Yes.
Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments from our citizens. That's, you know, you never, you never know what you're going to hear about signs in Oakwood. Okay. All right.
Got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes. This next one is an ordinance amending Section 1171.09, lot splits on which no plat is required of the Oakwood subdivision code so as to clarify the process for administrative review and approval of certain minor subdivisions without requiring a formal plat. This is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the subdivision code so that minor lot splits and consolidations can be approved administratively. It was introduced with a first reading at our April meeting. The city manager already has authority to issue these administrative approvals in many cases, but the current code requires a deed or instrument of conveyance for these minor adjustments, so there is no option for administrative approval where no actual conveyance is taking place. A common example in Oakwood happens when the owner of a double lot wishes to consolidate them into a single parcel. There is no conveyance because neither lot is changing ownership. They're simply being merged under the same ownership. As I noted last month, this is a common sense amendment that eliminates an unnecessary formal review process. It will allow for these kind of boundary adjustments to be made more quickly and at a lower cost to the property owner. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for our vice mayor? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation this evening. We've got a staff report from our finance department, and Cindy Stafford is here to present that for us, and we welcome you, Cindy. Please start. I will be right back.
Okay. Well, good evening, mayor, council, city manager, staff, and residents who are still here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'll have to turn it on. So, this evening, I'm going to talk a little bit about how we ended 2023, how the audit is progressing for the financial statements for 2023, and then where the city is so far through April 30th of 2024. And I do want to remind all of the residents that all this financial information that I'm presenting this evening is available on the city's website in the finance department under the monthly financial statement tabs. First graph I'm going to talk about is year-to-date, December 2023, for general city services. So, general city services is everything but refuse, water, sanitary sewer, and the stormwater funds. And then we'll start with receipts first. And if we look at receipts and we compare budget to actual, our actual receipts exceeded our budget by about $522,000. The reason why that happened this year is basically because of our investments. Earnings for 2023 were about $505,000 more than I had originally budgeted. The city's policy on our investment, or our investment strategy is to preserve principal. So, we're somewhat limited in what we are allowed to invest in. Most of those are government-backed securities, things like U.S. Treasuries, Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, Federal Home Loan Bank. We can also do things like certificates of deposits through the bank. And so, our investment yields started to pick up towards the end of 2022, and then in 2023, they really blossomed. So, that was a very good thing for receipts. I skip forward just one here. When we look at our revenue for 2023, we're still looking at income tax being our primary revenue source, 62.5%. Property tax at 17, almost 17.5%. And the 20%, that little increase this year is really because of the investment earnings. But that includes everything else, including the local government fund, any grants that we might receive, as well as revenue from leisure services, from the swim memberships, the fitness memberships, the classes, all of those kind of things. This schedule, or the spreadsheet or graph that I've shown, kind of shows you what's happened with first income tax. And what we see going back to 2018 is where you'll see a rise, and then we kind of plateau, and then we rise, and then we plateau. So, for 2023, our revenues were actually fairly close to what they were in 2022. We were about $200,000 less than I had budgeted. I had budgeted $11 million in 2023, and we came in at 10.8 million. And that's fairly common as we look at our history. If I had shown this graph going back, back to 2010, you would kind of see that same, a little bit of an increase, then a plateau for a year or two, and then an increase. So, that's nothing unusual for us, and so I would assume that eventually that will start increasing again. The green line is our property tax, and as you can see, that stays flat. And it stays flat because I won't go into it, but it's the inside millage and the outside millage. We only have 10 mills of inside millage, 88 of outside millage. The outside millage, doesn't matter what your property valuation is, it's not going to go up. The city's not getting any more money. It's only that small, little 10-mill inside piece, and that's what you see is the slight increase. In 2024, we'll see a drop because of the levy that expired. In March, that levy was passed by our residents again. So, in 2025, you'll see that line come back up to where it is because the levy that was passed was basically at the same effective millage as the one that expired. So, it should bring in right about the same amount.
Cindy, if you don't mind, real quick, while I'm thinking about it, with the high property values that have gone up and the auditors, you know, taking everything up real high, do we expect a large increase on property? I know, understand millage, but it still won't affect it at all, even if the auditor has increased the property values of the properties?
Only that real small inside millage piece. So, when the city passes a levy, if they pass a levy and that levy is for $3 million, we will never get more than $3 million. So, that $3 million gets spread out amongst everybody.
Oh, I see.
And if your property value goes up, yours could go up, and somebody else's could go down. But a lot of times, you know, depending on what happens, it's only going to be $3 million, and the city's only going to get that $3 million or the schools or whomever it is.
Excellent. Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. And so, then the blue line is our, all the other, and you can see the little uptick at the end in 2023. Again, that's our investment increases for this year. The little uptick in 2020 was basically during COVID was because of the CARES Act money we received from the federal government. But the even bigger piece was the rebates we received on our premiums from workers' comp from the state of Ohio. So, you can see that we had that little uptick, and then it kind of came back down again. And then we're seeing now the increase from our interest. If we go back to our general city services and we talk a little bit about dispersments and where we ended the year with dispersments and encumbrances, obviously, we ended the year at 95% of what we budgeted. Every year, I stand up here and I say, when I budget, I budget in, I have to give a little bit of cushion because we don't know what prices are going to be. We're trying to estimate a year from now what we're going to buy something, what we're going to pay for something. And so, when I go back and I look and I say, okay, what's that, what's that delta? What caused that $975,000 difference between what I budgeted and what actually came in? When I go and I look at the accounts, and I can honestly tell you, there's probably 700 accounts between all of the funds and trying to find out the, you know, pick out some of the larger items. What I've come to the conclusion, and I think the biggest takeaway is really it's kudos to the staff at the city because it's their work and effort in getting quotes and finding the best option for the dollars that they have to spend. And I really place that effort on staff and just the fact that they are so judicious in how they spend the city's tax dollars. Yes, there is a cushion in the air in hopes that prices don't rise, so some of that is the savings, but really, it's staff and doing their best to find the best prices out there. We ended the year with the general fund balance of $8.7 million. General city services, which are all of the funds that make up this, was $18.2 million. So, if you kind of compare the $18.2 million where we ended the year, based on what we spent last year and what we brought in last year, we ended 2023 in a very good position for our general city services. If we look at refuse, it was $957. I'm going to take the credit for that. We're estimating where refuse would come in, so I think we hit that right on the nose. Our dispersments and encumbrances, we were at 92%. And again, I look for the items that might cause that to increase, and again, there isn't one significant thing. Again, there's that 3% cushion built into some of the costs in order to watch for the inflation factor that we have with some of our costs that we were predicting. But in the end, we came very close to budget, and I think we ended the year, or not, I think we did end the year at about $487,000 for the fund, for the refuse fund. So, again, a solid performance in the refuse. And then the last graph that I have is all of the enterprise funds together, so water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. And if we look at receipts, the difference between what I budgeted, $152,000, $115 of that, $115,000 of that is investment earnings again, and those are the investment earnings allocated to the enterprise funds. When we look at dispersments and encumbrances, that difference of about $427,000, kind of the same thing. It's going to be that increase that we put in there in anticipation of some rising prices. A lot of little smaller items, nothing large that kind of sticks out. We ended the year with enterprise having, all the enterprise accounts having 2.9 million in them. And I do want to say that 67% of our costs in the sanitary sewer are paid to Montgomery County and the city of Dayton for wastewater treatment. So, that is one of the larger costs in the enterprise funds that goes outside the city. And again, when we look at all of the funds and where we ended, general city services, the enterprise funds, and refuse, a very solid footing for 2024. And so, before I move forward, any questions on 2023's financials? So, when it comes to the 2023 financials, fieldwork has just been finished on all of the, on the audit for 2023. I anticipate getting a draft sent up to the state of Ohio by the end of this week. The auditors have not made me aware of any issues that they found during the audit, so I do anticipate another clean opinion. It was a pretty quick audit. They were in and out pretty quickly, so no issues. And considering all of the staffing changes that I've had in the finance department, I just want to give a shout-out to the department because they've really stepped up and have done a very good job this year. In 2024, working through the audit, we're down a person, down a person and a half, actually. And so, they're doing a fantastic job. So, kudos to them. Any questions on the audit? 2024. So, at this point in time, we would expect to be about a third of the way through the budget, so 33%. If we look at receipts for general city services, April and May are largest tax revenue months for income tax, hence the reason why we're at 41%. In addition to that, property taxes, we usually get about 50% of our property taxes in the month of April as well because people are paying in February, so the county gets it to us by April. So, the combination of those two things are what have us at 41% right now. I foresee that kind of tailoring and kind of following the budget as we get closer to the end of the year. This year, I can say that I increased investment earnings in there, so we won't see the big difference between what I estimated in the budget versus what we actually received. So, hopefully, I've captured that number a little closer to what investment yields are for this year. When we look at dispersments and encumbrances, so dispersments and encumbrances, that includes checks written as well as purchase orders. Purchase orders being, we are planning on buying it, we've looked, we have an idea how much, this is how much we think it's going to be, and so, we put a purchase order, but we haven't paid for it yet. So, at the beginning of the year, not only do we have purchase orders for some of the capital items because of the lead times that we're seeing still, but we also do what's called blanket purchase orders. We do those things for fuel, for repair parts, and some of those things. So, you're actually seeing a higher purchase order now that, as it gets spent over the years, over the year, will come down. So, if I actually look at checks written, we're at around 28% at this point in time, so much closer to what we expect budget to be. Refuse, our receipts are right on target, what we expect them to be. The same explanation for the dispersments and encumbrances, but actually, in this case, we've purchased the capital items, the capital equipment that we were buying for refuse already this year. So, checks written are actually at 40%. So, that's causing that number to be at the 49% for dispersments and encumbrances. And then finally, for the enterprise funds, the water, sanitary, and sewer, our receipts are actually slightly below what we would expect those to be, but we anticipate with watering season, lawns, gardens, flower beds, we'll see that number start to rise in the summer months as we see people watering. So, I anticipate that'll get closer to what we anticipate budget-wise, if I'm looking for a nice little line graph there. Dispersments and encumbrances, same thing. If we look at actual checks written, we're at 28%, so we're very close to what we anticipate. So, what we're seeing so far, I'm not noticing, prices are up slightly, but we're not seeing a huge increase in what we're buying. Again, I attribute that to staff doing their best. I attribute that to staff doing their best to go out there and find those things at the best price. So I anticipate in the year, very close to budget for receipts and dispersments. Any questions?
No. Thank you very much for your report. And it's always very informative. And you're going to have a similar report for our Budget Review Committee tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
We have a 32-member Budget Review Committee. It's four members from each of our eight precincts, and we rely on them heavily for advice and consent and recommendations on our budget. So I think this one tomorrow is pretty much, here's where we're at, as opposed to not going to spend a lot of time talking about a 25 budget yet.
No, not yet.
It's getting close.
Getting close.
Getting close.
Got to get through the audit first. Got to finish the audit.
Okay, very good.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy.
All right. It's now time for our city manager's report.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I have to compliment Cindy and the finance department. It's a small but mighty department, seven employees. And, you know, it's one thing when you have everyone, every position filled, and you've had people here for a number of years, you know, a consistent, well-trained staff. It's a whole nother thing when you're down, as Cindy pointed out, one and a half employees, which we are, we are right now. And equally important, or maybe more importantly, that when you have turnover. And we don't have a lot of turnover here on Oakwood staff historically, but in the finance department over the last couple of years, we've lost four out of the seven employees. Two to retirement, one to a new job opportunity, and one to, I guess, motherhood, right? That's the best way to put it. And all four of those employees were outstanding. And it's been a real challenge for the department to, to keep up with everything. But Cindy and her right hand, Tracy Martin, have done a phenomenal job in doing what needs to be done here to manage that department. So thank you. And we are, we've selected a person to take the full-time job that's vacant right now, and we anticipate that employee starting in about two weeks. So that'll be a big bonus. The Leaf Mulch program is enormously popular again this year. I've been down there. I went down the first three Saturdays with my '66 Chevy, and, and each time I saw a public works yard full of people, some getting truckloads delivered and some shoveling little trashcans or little recycled bins worth of, and putting them in the back of a Mercedes or a Volvo. It, it's, you see it across the board. But it's a very good product. I can personally attest to it. And there's just one more Saturday. That's this coming Saturday when it's available. Construction projects, the Far Hill Storm Sewer job is nearing completion. This week, the last piece of pipe will be put in the ground on Ford Boulevard. And then the contractor will be about the site restoration. And within the next couple of weeks, we anticipate the outside lane, curb lane, southbound to be reopened, which will then mark the complete reopening of Far Hill, and also the, the lane that's currently closed on the, on the northbound, near Ford Boulevard. But it'll all be reopened in the next couple of weeks. And again, the, the final site restoration will take place. Tomorrow night, I, I will show the Budget Committee a map of the city that, that depicts the drainage area that this sewer project, 2.1 million, is accommodating. And it's quite significant. And I know you all know the city, but if you can picture, you know, very roughly, but Schaefer Boulevard down to Wilshire, just a couple of blocks south of the library, over to Devereaux, you know, a little bit east or a little bit west of 48, and all the way up to Patterson. That, that area in general is what drains to these sewers that we've been working on since last July, August. So it's a significant improvement to the city. And again, I want to thank the property owners, particularly those who live right around the construction area, for, for their patience. And we anticipate later this week or early next week, some concrete roadway repair will begin on Raleigh Road and Woodstock, and maybe a little bit on Devereaux. And that's part, that's, the contractor doing that work is the same one that will be doing the sidewalk curb and apron work in the Far Hills Business District, starting in June. And the last thing I have is I want to recognize Carol Collins, our Leisure Services Director. I'm going to put my glasses on here, and if you'll indulge me for a few more minutes here. On May 9th of 1922...
1922.
1922. On May 9th...
Carol started.
No, no, no. Just bear, bear with me. A, a young man, who of course I didn't know, by name of Harry W. Carter, walked into the Oakwood, city of Oakwood, and began working for the service department. And I'm guessing he was probably 17 or 18 years old. May 9th, 1922. On December 31st, 1971, Harry W. Carter retired. About three years after that, Carol Collins graduated from the Ohio State University. And on August 19th, 1974, so by just three years, the two didn't overlap, but Carol started here. And on April 11th of this year, Carol eclipsed the record of Harry W. Carter working for the city of Oakwood in terms of the tenure, longevity, I'll call it. At that time, Harry Carter had the record at 49 years, seven months, and 23 days. So on April 12th, Carol started her 24th day of the seventh month, 49 years. And we had a wonderful luncheon for Carol about a week ago to celebrate that incredible milestone. Carol initially was our, our city horticulturist, and Dave Fell, who you all know the name, and some of you knew him, hired Carol primarily to oversee Smith Gardens, because it was right at that time that the Smith family gave the city Smith Gardens. And over all these 49, nearly 40, nearly 50 years, Carol has seen to what we all appreciate as Smith Gardens. In 1998, Mike Kelly, my predecessor, promoted Carol to the department head, head of the Leisure Services Department. And I'll end with just by saying that we had four employees that are, three retired, one still here, that were at the luncheon. And one of them got here in 1976, John Chain, so two years after Carol arrived here. And John retired in 2000. And, you know, he worked here 24 years, but served at Green County and in the US Navy before that. So Kathy Gibson, who was the clerk of counsel, Lori's predecessor, arrived here in 81. So that would be seven years after Carol got here. And after 31 years of service, Kathy retired in 2012, 12 years ago, just putting this in perspective. And Jay Weiskircher, who you all know, arrived here in 82, retired in 2017, after 35 years here. And Tracy Martin, who I mentioned a moment ago, on April 15th, celebrated her 37th year here. But she got here in 87, and Carol got here in 74. So in August, we will have a very large celebration when Carol reaches that 50-year milestone. And I've asked Sangita, our HR director, to find out from the state of Ohio, how many 50-year local government employees they're aware of. Because I assure you and everyone else that it's a very, very, very short list. So I just wanted to thank Carol publicly for her commitment and timeless service to the Oakwood community.
Well, I, I was saving it for my council comments, but I was going to report that Vice Mayor Byington and I met with the fourth grade class from Smith School to talk about, you know, what the, what the council and the city council does. And, and they also got to tour our public facility here, where our fire apparatus is. And they got to see our temporary holding facility, AKA the jail. And that was the highlight. But the previous time, when the Harmon kids came here, they asked me, well, how old are you? And I said, well, let me answer it this way. I says, who was president when you were born? And all these little third graders are scratching their head. And finally, somebody said Obama. And, and then I said, well, if, let's turn this into a math question, okay? When I was born, the president was Truman, so do the math. Do you know who was president when you started here? See? They had a 20-year-old, they had a 20-year-old student teacher from UD who was like a teacher's aide, and she's scratching her, she didn't know who was president when she was born either.
Ford. It was either Ford or Nixon.
Well, depends, it's either pre-August or post-August.
Bill, let, Bill, let's.
Let's move on. Let's move on. Congratulations.
This is in jeopardy.
Sit in the roast. We're not going to roast her.
All right. Yeah, we're, but the roast is coming. You know, just, yes, okay. So are you finished? I'm sorry. Okay. So we'll now go to council comments and Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor Duncan proclaimed, this is older Americans' month. And although my comment may sound self-serving, since I'm officially an older citizen in our community, I did want to emphasize how important it was to me when I first moved to Oakwood, to live in a community where intergenerational relationships existed and were valued. I truly valued the relationships I was able to form and admired the community service and the civic engagement that I observed the seniors in Oakwood perform. Their presence enriched our neighborhood, block by block. So this is a message to seniors. Your contribution to our community is unique. We need you. We welcome. Please stay.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I have something a little different tonight. I know you've all walked or driven through Oakwood lately, and you can't possibly miss the colorful display of spring flowers and trees. They truly are spectacular. And so for my council comments tonight, I have pictures, so you can ooh and ah for just a moment on the beauty of our little city. All right. Okay. One of the first flowers to bloom in the spring in Oakwood is the aconite. And you see it here in the upper left corner. It's in the buttercup family, and it literally blankets the, the ground at Loy Gardens. And it just makes this magical forest effect that is almost ethereal. You should really check that one out. But then come the daffodils. And here you see them at How Extreme, the business district. Whoops, back. Yep. How Extreme, the business district. And of course, we can't forget that profusion of daffodils along Ridgeway. Okay. Following the daffodils come the tulips. And there is no better display than at Smith Gardens. So thank you for that, Carol. And I also included some of the, the iris. What are those? The Siberian iris? Because they're so beautiful. Okay. And then the trees start to bloom. You know, one of the first trees is the magnolia. And there is a magnificent saucer magnolia on the corner of Harmon and Park. And we also have more at Orchardly Park. And following the magnolias, we have a superabundance of flowering crab trees in both pink and white. And here you see them along Schaefer. And then on the next slide, we have more of the flowering crab, crab apples on Schaefer, Forre, and at Hawthorne Hill. And then come my favorites, the red buds and the dogwood. And here you see them on Schaefer, Far Hills, Delwood, and in my backyard on Ford Boulevard. But you know, we really can't talk about our trees without mentioning our designation as a Tree City USA. Oakwood has been a Tree City USA for 42 consecutive years, which is really quite amazing. And in recognition of that, of this accomplishment, NORB received a Tree City USA Award at a recent banquet held in Tip City. Now, the gentleman presenting the award is David Lane, and he's the Assistant Chief of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Now, to be a Tree City, there are a lot of requirements, but one of the most significant ones is, is that we have to establish an annual tree budget that's equal to $2 per capita. And so in a year, that's almost $20,000 that Oakwood puts towards their trees. And then, of course, we have to talk about our ever-popular Johnny Appleseed program, where we have planted 3,323 trees since Carol Collins implemented that in 1979. And so if you've ever wondered what Oakwood would look like without its mature trees, here you see a picture of Smith School in 1926. It's hardly recognizable compared to it is today. And so I think we all agree that the mature trees and the seasonal flowers really make Oakwood a beautiful and welcoming city. And many, many, many kudos to Carol Collins and her staff who made all of that possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbin. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. First thing, thank you to Cindy and her staff. And please tell all of your staff that council really appreciates all your hard work and continued success on those audits. We love those, those great audits. So, thank you, Cindy. My only other comment is to talk to you about something happening in 12 short days. It is the annual That Day in May. Rotary Club of Oakwood puts this on every year. I'll give you just a quick rundown. Saturday morning, kids run, 5K run, 10K run, with a pancake breakfast before or after you run. Parade on Schaefer, kids games, dunk booth, and food trucks. So that's all day Saturday. And then something started, I believe, three years ago. The Rotary Club is also putting on a golf outing at DCC with a cocktail party and a silent auction. They moved the silent auction to the golf outing on Monday. And everyone is welcome to attend that. And obviously, Saturday is open event. You know, it's a wonderful event. It's the biggest event in our city where the most people attend at one time. So it's always a, a good time and always successful. It's the biggest fundraiser for the Oakwood Rotary Club as well. So hopefully everyone can attend this year.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yeah. First of all, I'll start by asking Carol, what'd you do for the first eight years? Why didn't we get Tree City?
Oh, you're going to make her.
She knows the answer.
We've done it for 42 years. I want to know why we haven't done it for 50.
Slack in the first eight years, obviously.
Okay. At the beginning, the city of Cincinnati was the first one to receive that award. And then Oakwood was next. But they didn't have a Tree City USA until after I came on board.
Okay.
So city of Cincinnati, I think, was only one year ahead of us.
Okay.
So we're the second one in the northwest Ohio, or southwest Ohio area for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good answer.
She allowed to report to work tomorrow now?
Oh, yeah. No, I was, I was just curious. I was just giving her grief. Speaking of That Day in May, I just wanted to say that all of council will be in the parade. So make sure to wave at us. And I also wanted to announce that our city manager is going to be the grand marshal for the parade this year. So he will be in his own vehicle, yes, waving. Have you practiced the wave?
You can tell he's excited.
I'm more of a private guy, but I appreciate it very much. I love the Oakwood Rotary Club. And I, I'm going to bring my...
You can practice your wave.
I got a, I got three beautiful grandsons, and I'm going to throw them in the back of my '66 Chevy. They're 10, 7, and 5, and we're going to have a blast.
Don't forget your dog.
He's...
Can you get him in the?
Not so much.
He's getting too big and he's too heavy.
And then the last thing I wanted to do was to congratulate the Oakwood High School Academic Decathlon team for their 12th. I don't even know if there's a word for that 12th Pete of the National Division III Championship.
Division II, I believe.
What's that?
I think it's Division II.
I think it's Division III. Anyway, national championship. That, they won that in Pittsburgh this year, the week of April 24th. I just wanted to congratulate Lori Morris and her, her team. I just think that is an unbelievable accomplishment, given the competition that they face every year from across the nation. So 12 years in a row is definitely a din... So twelve years in a row is definitely a dynasty. So congratulations to them. Hopefully we'll get them to come to council and recognize them here.
We need to hurry because they all go off to college.
Well, that's true.
And they, they received a lot of scholarship money for.
They certainly did.
Their efforts.
Okay, I have, I think I used my comment, you know, talking about the Smith fourth graders. So I will not say anything more about that. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, June third, and we wish you all come back.
Exactly.
Very good.